That sounds much better.
I'm here, thank you.
We're going to move on to agenda item number two, the International Growth Fund and Possible Replacement.
Randy, this is Jason. I'm sorry to interrupt. Jay, can you click the mute button? We're getting some serious blind action.
Yeah, hang on.
I've been in negotiations all day, so we've had trains, airplanes, people in their backyard. So as I mentioned a minute ago, we're going to do agenda item number two, International Growth Fund and Possible Replacement. And Vincent Galindo will be presenting.
I don't know how you want to do this, if the members wanted to follow along on their own screens. If somebody administering this meeting wants to share their screen, or if you would like mine, but I'm certainly flexible. So please let me know. And I guess we can decide as we move into a little bit of background. And I'm just wondering, if anybody who's maybe not talking can mute their phones, that would be helpful.
We're going to mute ours too, so I'll just stay close to the phone.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, so a little bit of background.
I'd appreciate it if we use... I'd appreciate it if you used your screen so we could follow what you're saying.
Okay, does everybody see the highest group? 457 International Growth Manager Search Report? And so a little bit of background on our firm before we delve into this. And this may be a refresher from the last meeting when we did a similar exercise with another fund. A couple of things, as an investment consulting firm, we are designed to pull the investment manager landscape for not only the funds that you have in your lineup, but also funds that you may not have in case there's other funds that are more appropriate. And in talking to the fund managers and having a relationship with them, as a fiduciary, we're constantly trying to predict outperformance in the future by looking at the structure of the management team, the structure of the portfolio. And sometimes we do see really, really good long-term managers have some short-term weakness. So we're not reflective or reactionary over short market dips. Whenever we do make a recommendation to change, it's based on something that's fundamentally broken with the management team, or at least they've dug themselves into a big enough hole that we feel like it's less than appropriate to stay to see if they can come back out. The other part of it too is, as fiduciaries to the plan, we don't receive anything from the fund managers that we recommend. We are completely independent, and in fact, by law, we have a vested responsibility to make recommendations in the participants' best interest. And so in taking a look at the funds on a regular basis, like I said, and talking with the fund managers, the group at Wellington, who's the sub-adviser with Hartford International Opportunities Fund, we feel like it falls into that first category where we feel that just structurally, the fund management team is less than ideal, and there are other managers that are more appropriate. And given the recent significant underperformance, we place this on the agenda so that the committee can have a discussion and hopefully make a decision at the end of this 20, 30 minutes, however long you want to take. So what we've done is presented this search document where we compare the incumbent, which is at Hartford International Opportunities, with three other potential candidates. And in large part, we would be happy with any of the other candidates. We do have a recommendation to move away from Hartford. And we do have a hierarchy or ranking system of those three in order which ones would be more appropriate than the others of the three replacement candidates. And as we move into the section, really from a narrative standpoint, on page two, you can see the background on the Hartford International Opportunities Fund. Again, this is the incumbent or the current option on the menu. And then the first replacement candidate is managed by John Hancock. Interestingly enough, this fund is also sub-advised by Wellington. It is a different team at Wellington than the Hartford International Opportunities, but this is one replacement candidate. The second is MFS International Growth. This team is out of Massachusetts, hence the MFS. It stands for Massachusetts Financial Services. This is also an East Coast-based team managed by MFS. And then lastly, there is a fund managed by Vanguard, and this is sub-advised by two firms. And so there is some level of sub-advisement in the funds within this document. As we move into the next section, on page five, the top part has these peer group rankings over different time periods. And because these peer group rankings are expressed in percentiles, these numbers in the top third of this page will range from 1 to 100. And we have some short-term numbers as well as longer-term numbers towards the middle. And on the right are calendar year peer group rankings. Anything below median or 50th percentile is going to show red. And so you can see over the more recent period, Hartford International Opportunities has come back a little bit. But you can see over the last few years, the fund has underperformed. And as I said, Wellington is a relatively strong manager, and so we decided to give them a pass. But in talking to the team, we felt moving away at this point would be the most appropriate. You can see the peer group rankings for the three replacement candidates, John Hancock, MFS, and Vanguard directly beneath. In the middle third of this page, you can see absolute performance or returns. These are the performance numbers that the fund has given to the investors net of fees. And then on the bottom third are the plus-minus index, whereas if there is any outperformance relative to the benchmark, it's going to show black. If there's any underperformance relative to the benchmark, it's going to show red or parentheses. So moving on to the next page, page six. The scatter plot on the upper half is really where we take a look not just at return or performance, but we also calculate risk or a measure of volatility, which is standard deviation. It's a measure of volatility in and of itself, or for lack of a better term, wiggle for a fund performance. And so our ideal is to have investments that are in this area here, where we're essentially maximizing return while minimizing any of that risk, again, as measured by volatility or wiggle. But since that's impossible, we're trying to get as close to that as we can. You'll see down here, the Hartford International Opportunities is exhibiting a significant amount of risk without compensating for additional return to the investors. Up here in the upper part is the Vanguard International Growth, significant return, but also a little bit more risk than the incumbent. MFS, the green square, and John Hancock, the blue square, are right around here and striking a balance between that relatively high return while also relatively muted risk profile. And then this chart flows directly into this chart on the bottom left. The Sharpe ratio, in essence, is the risk-free return of a fund divided by the Sharpe ratio or volatility. And so said another way, we're looking for funds with a relative high Sharpe ratio. And you can see true to form, the incumbent Hartford International Opportunities has a relatively low Sharpe ratio because the standard deviation is high. The Vanguard Fund has a relatively high Sharpe ratio because of the two factors. One, it has a significant high return profile. And I'm just wondering, yeah, if anybody who's maybe not talking can mute their phones. That would be helpful.
We're going to mute ours, too, so I'll just stay close to the phone.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, so a little bit of background.
And I'd appreciate it if we use.
Go ahead.
I'd appreciate it if you used your screen so we could follow what you're saying.
Right, let me. Okay, does everybody see the Highest Group 457 International Growth Manager Search Report? Yeah. Okay, great. And so a little bit of background on our firm before we delve into this. And this may be a refresher from the last meeting when we did a similar exercise with another fund. A couple of things, as an investment consulting firm, we are designed to pull the investment manager landscape for not only the funds that you have in your lineup, but also funds that you may not have in case there's other funds that are more appropriate. And in talking to the fund managers and having a relationship with them as a fiduciary, we're constantly trying to predict outperformance in the future by looking at the structure of the management team, the structure of the portfolio. And sometimes we do see really, really good long-term managers have some short-term weakness. So we're not reflective or reactionary over short market dips. Whenever we do make a recommendation to change, it's based on something that's fundamentally broken with the management team, or at least they've dug themselves into a big enough hole that we feel like it's less than appropriate to stay to see if they can come back out. The other part of it, too, is as fiduciaries to the plan, we don't receive anything from the fund managers that we recommend. We are completely independent. And in fact, by law, we have a vested responsibility to make recommendations in the participants' best interest. And so in taking a look at the funds on a regular basis, like I said, and talking with the fund managers, the group at Wellington, who's the sub-advisor with Hartford International Opportunities Fund, we feel like it falls into that first category where we feel that just structurally, the fund management team is less than ideal. And there are other managers that are more appropriate. And given the recent significant underperformance, we place this on the agenda so that the committee can have a discussion and hopefully make a decision at the end of this 20, 30 minutes, however long you want to take. So what we've done is presented this search document where we compare the incumbent, which is at Hartford International Opportunities, with three other potential candidates. And in large part, we would be happy with any of the other candidates. We do have a recommendation to move away from Hartford. And we do have a, I guess, a hierarchy or ranking system of those three in order of which ones would be more appropriate than the others of the three replacement candidates. And as we move into the section, really from a narrative standpoint, on page two, you can see the background on the Hartford International Opportunities Fund. Again, this is the incumbent or the current option on the menu. And then the first replacement candidate is managed by John Hancock. Interestingly enough, this fund is also sub-advised by Wellington. It is a different team at Wellington than the Hartford International Opportunities, but this is one replacement candidate. The second is MFS International Growth. This team is out of Massachusetts, hence the MFS. It stands for Massachusetts Financial Services. This is also an East Coast-based team managed by MFS. And then lastly, there is a fund managed by Vanguard. And this is sub-advised by two firms. By two firms. And so there is some level of sub-advisement in the funds within this document. As we move into the next section, on page five, the top part has these peer group rankings over different time periods. And because these peer group rankings are expressed in percentiles, these numbers in the top third of this page will range from 1 to 100. And we have some short-term numbers as well as longer-term numbers towards the middle. And on the right are calendar year peer group rankings. Anything below median or 50th percentile is going to show red. And so you can see over the more recent period, Hartford International Opportunities has come back a little bit. But you can see over the last few years, the fund has underperformed. And as I said, Wellington is a relatively strong manager. And so we decided to give them a pass. But in talking to the team, we felt moving away at this point would be the most appropriate. You can see the peer group rankings for the three replacement candidates, John Hancock, MFS, and Vanguard directly beneath. In the middle third of this page, you can see absolute performance or returns. These are the performance numbers that the fund has given to the investors, net of fees. And then on the bottom third are the plus-minus index, whereas if there is any outperformance relative to the benchmark, it's going to show black. If there's any underperformance relative to the benchmark, it's going to show red or parentheses. So moving on to the next page, page six, this scatter plot on the upper half is really where we take a look not just at return or performance, but we also calculate risk or a measure of volatility, which is standard deviation. It's a measure of volatility in and of itself, or for lack of a better term, wiggle for a fund performance. And so our ideal is to have investments that are in this area here, where we're essentially maximizing return while minimizing any of that risk, again, as measured by volatility or wiggle. But since that's impossible, we're trying to get as close to that as we can. You'll see down here, the Hartford International Opportunities is exhibiting a significant amount of risk without compensating for additional return to the investors. Up here in the upper part is the Vanguard International Growth, significant return, but also a little bit more risk than the incumbent. MFS, the green square, and John Hancock, the blue square, are right around here and striking a balance between that relatively high return while also relatively muted risk profile. And then this chart flows directly into this chart on the bottom left. The Sharpe ratio, in essence, is the risk-free return of a fund divided by the Sharpe ratio or volatility. And so said another way, we're looking for funds with a relative high Sharpe ratio. And you can see, true to form, the incumbent Hartford International Opportunities has a relatively low Sharpe ratio because the standard deviation is high. The Vanguard Fund has a relatively high Sharpe ratio because of the two factors. One, it has a significant high return profile, but also it has a relatively high standard deviation. But in the Sharpe ratio calculation, this fund shows very well. And then the other two possible replacement candidates, the green and blue, are in between. We take a look at the bottom right and the upside-down, upside-downside capture. What we're looking for are funds that participate on the upside while not participating on the downside. So significant outperformance in bull markets and some strong performance in bear markets. And you can see the incumbent has a relatively muted upside capture, but a significantly high downside capture. And then the opposite is true with the Vanguard Fund. Relatively high upside capture, but almost mirroring the downside capture. And again, true to form, a little bit more consistent return out of the blue and green, which is the John Hancock and MFS in between. From a style standpoint, I'm flipping ahead to page seven. What we do is we take a look at the structure of the portfolio. If you recall, this is an international growth portfolio or international growth mandate. What we're looking for are funds that are around the growth side of the spectrum compared to the value side of the style box. From a pure growth standpoint, Vanguard is definitely the most growthy, followed by John Hancock. Then you have the index and the average, followed by Hartford, which is the incumbent. And then approaching more of the core or more value as opposed to growth is the MFS. And so you can see from a style standpoint how these funds lay out in terms of their holdings. Are they more growth? Are they more value or somewhere in between? And then last but not least, before I pause and take a breath, this is the fee structure of the current incumbent as well as the three replacement candidates. We feel that there are many variables that go into the search document. Cost is just one input of our analysis or calculus. And so from a fund standpoint, the expense ratio of the Hartford International Opportunity Fund is 71 basis points or 0.71%, meaning the fund manager takes 71 basis points off the return, collects that as their fee, and then reports the performance after that deduction, net of fees. The John Hancock International charges a little bit more at 88 basis points. MFS at 77, and the Vanguard at 32. And you can see, given the amount of assets in this particular fund within the fund lineups, the actual dollar amount in terms of an impact. So $75,000 annually participants are paying for the Hartford Fund. If you move to John Hancock, that number would jump to $93,000 annually. $81,000 annually with the MFS and $34,000 annually with the Vanguard Fund. I will pause, see if anybody has comments, questions. We have a lot more data points, but I wanted to just summarize the highlights.
Any questions or comments for Vincent? This is Brandy.
Hi, this is Nancy Calkins.
Go ahead, Nancy.
So Vincent, I was wondering if you could just spend a couple of minutes talking about sub-advisors and because several of these are sub-advised funds. And, you know, what that means? Why wouldn't we go to Wellington or Schroders or whoever directly? And what are the advantages and disadvantages to having sub-advised funds?
Great question. So in many instances, and this is probably over the last, I was going to say 10 years, but given my age, probably 20 years, there is a certain level of brand awareness with fund companies. And so the benefit of a sub-advised fund is that you have a somewhat of a household name in the fund manager or the fund, I guess, the fund name. But the fund manager realizes that there are better management teams out there. And so American Beacon, American Funds, there are some very, very prominent names that say we're going to farm out the actual management of our funds to a third party. And Vanguard, which is somewhat of a household names in terms of passive or index funds, realize that they want to offer a full suite, and that includes actively managed funds. And they are very well-known to use sub-advisers. I apologize. Other shops like Pimco, Dodson Cox, say, almost to your point, Nancy, why farm it out if we can do a better job in-house? And so they do it themselves. There's no real pro and con of using sub-advisers or not. That's generally part of our calculation. I think the only potential con would be that there is little control on the consultant or the committee side. And this is what happened with the Vanguard Midcap Growth Fund. We hired Vanguard Midcap Growth, and they swapped out the sub-advisers. And they felt it was in the best interest, but we didn't necessarily believe that. So I think the only con would be lack of control, but that's about it. I would say in terms of the prevalence, I'm guessing probably half are direct and half are sub-advised. And then lastly, why wouldn't you just hire a Schroders International Growth Fund? The one nice thing about using a firm like Vanguard is you have two things tied to, I guess, scope or size. Not only do you have the infrastructure with a very, very large fund manager, but you also have pricing with a very, very big fund management team. And so those would be, I guess, a nod towards using a big fund, the big fund company that sub-advises.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Vincent from the team?
It said there are a number of pages that we can go through, but I wanted to at least see if there was an appetite to talk about moving away from Hartford. If there was any thoughts about of the three you'd want to move, if you'd like to hear our recommendation, or if you want to get into the subsequent pages.
This is Jay, Vincent. I looked at this pretty extensively before the meeting and then listening to you go through it now. To me, it almost seems like a no-brainer. Excuse me.
And that's not intentional, but I'm laughing only because it is somewhat of an awkward position because you're right. The other, the other part of it, too, is there's one fund candidate that shows very, very well. And of course, we don't underthink this. Our fear is that if we make a recommendation to move, are we merely chasing the hot dot in a very interesting and unique market cycle? But I would agree with you, Jay.
Vincent, this is Fonse. Kind of to that point, again, you know, after you look at an investment and take losses for many years, and I know you said there were some structural issues that we have here. How do we know that it's not going to swing back in all those years that we've taken a loss? It's finally about to pay off. Again, I know you kind of touched on it a little bit before, but can you go into a little more about it?
Yeah, absolutely. And this is, this is one of the, I'd say, the top 10, one of the top 10 fears I have as a consultant and fiduciary of the plan, is that you go through a fund and you give them a wide berth, a good, solid team, and they go through one year of very bad performance. And you say, this is just a blip, let's hold tight. Then there's two years, and then there's three years, and the patience grows very, very thin, and we make a recommendation, and then they pop back up. At the interest or at the risk, I guess, of confusing, the issue is there's no real guarantee that this fund is going to continue to crater and do very, very well. So.
Vincent, can I, can I jump in? Because I think I can give you a good example of why this, I don't believe is that case at all, is these are all international growth-related funds. They're not, you know, one isn't some sort of a growth equity fund, and the other's a bond fund, and the other's, you know, international, and one's minings and metals. These are apples and apples and apples. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, sir.
So the fact that we have that much deviation in a basket of apples tells me some apples are better than the other. And if Vanguard, looking at Vanguard, okay, if you look at all the other Vanguard's, and when we did this initial move four or five years ago, Vanguard has performed really well just about in every scenario that we've run into since we've been with them. And this is another Vanguard. And, you know, I know, I hear what Fonse is saying, and I completely agree with him, which is why I was such an advocate of keeping that mining and minerals one in the portfolio when we were looking at kicking it out. Well, look at what's happened to minerals and mining right now. I mean, it's one of the best performing sectors out there, you know, second probably only to the fangs. So in that regard, I would agree. We don't want to kick somebody out just because they're having a bad row of it and pick on somebody else because they're the hot item. I don't think this is that case.
Agreed. And this is why, Fonse, I think is a good question, but this is the art of our analysts, is that they are trying to read the structure of the fund going backwards and looking at the numbers in context, but also trying to predict the future. And going back to my point, is at the risk of sounding, I guess, inadequate, there's no way to know. And that's why their, their job is to try and, through a cloudy crystal ball, see what makes sense going forward.
So Vincent, this is Nancy Calkins again. Maybe you can tell us the risks of transitioning. So you've given us some stats about the management costs and those kinds of things. And so those are all kind of on the pro side. But at some point, and I'm not sure I know exactly the process, but at some point, we say, okay, today's the day. We're going to switch from the Hartford Fund to the new fund. And when we do that, is it all done on the same day? Is, are we out of the market for a day or two? Or could you kind of go over that a little bit?
Sure. And I'll lean on Bob as the relationship manager for the record keeper. As far as I know, the risks are very minimal in terms of a market standpoint because these funds are very similar. It's not that you're switching from stocks to bonds or bonds to, like Jay said, real estate or mineral security deposits. These are very similar structure. So from a marketing standpoint, being, having a volatile period, I would say is that that risk is very, very minimal. From an administrative or transfer standpoint, Bob, do you want to comment on how long this typically takes? Is it done in a day? Are they out of the market?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as the process goes, we pick a date for the implementation. Typically, that date is going to be about two months from now, so say sometime towards the end of November. The reason we go out that far primarily is to account for all the advance notice. We like to get a notice out to participants to let them know that the change is happening. We like that notice to arrive in their mailbox about 30 days prior to the fund mapping. Fund mapping, meaning moving the money from Fund A to Fund B. There's not really time out of the market. It's just like somebody who decided to move money on their own at the close of market. One position is sold out of, and at the same market close, it's purchased into the new, the new fund. So you're not really out of the market for a day or anything. But you are picking a date that, like I said, is about two months out into the future. So I think, Nancy, you were asking about risk. I guess that would be the risk of not knowing if there's, you know, short-term market volatility on that particular date that the transaction occurs. There might be a little bit of risk, but in theory, these are invested similarly. So you would expect if, you know, one fund is dropping, the other one likely is as well.
Okay, but they are mutual funds. There's no ability to cross securities and that kind of thing.
These are all mutual funds.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Brandy, other questions?
I don't hear any other questions. But Vincent, I think you offered to provide a recommendation. Would the committee like to have that discussion with Vincent?
This is Fonse, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
I can't see everybody. I'm sorry. Thank you. Do you mind walking us through your thoughts, please?
Sure. And so the, and looking at this page, and I think this is where maybe JB was referring to the no-brainer, our first recommendation would be to move away from Hartford International. The most appropriate replacement candidate is the fund managed by Vanguard. Our second recommendation, if somehow, given all the other data points you disagreed, would be MFS. And then the third replacement candidate recommendation would be John Hancock. So in those order, in that order, I guess, that would be our recommendation.
Thoughts from the committee after hearing Vincent's recommendation?
My thoughts are that we move over to Vanguard.
Yeah, I agree with Jay as far as his earlier comment about no-brainer. I thought Vanguard stood out among the three choices.
This is Supervisor Miller. I agree. It seems like the clear choice.
Madam Chair, this is Jason. To the extent discussion is ongoing, that's great. A motion would be appropriate in that regard if somebody wants to make it.
I'll make it since I'm going to kick this off with my comments. I'd make a motion that we switch out of Hartford International to Vanguard International within the time parameters that Bob had mentioned.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Nancy Calkins.
Thank you, Nancy. And I think Donna will take a name roll call since we're all remote from each other, just so we can be clear.
Okay, Brandy.
Agreed.
Christine?
Agreed.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Nancy Calkins?
Yes.
And Fonse?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Three is the status update about the Midcap Growth Fund. And Vincent, you're back up.
And this, I chuckle only because this was a very, very thoughtful process there in Stockton County, but also internally at Highest Group. So this is almost the exact opposite. We had a very, very good long-term manager with the Vanguard Midcap Growth. If you recall, they had two sub-advisers. If you recall, they had two sub-advisors. They decided to add a third sub-advisor. All this should now sound familiar. And after 14 years of a very, very solid relationship with William Blair, at the end of last year, they decided to terminate that relationship. And it goes back to the control. But also, there's nothing to prevent any fund manager from firing one of the individual team managers. So nevertheless, we presented a search document for the mid-cap growth space. The committee there at San Joaquin County decided to terminate Vanguard for those reasons and hire MFS. And because of the cost and the platform limitation, but probably more importantly, marrying one participant notification with two fund changes, the committee decided to hold off and merge these two changes with one notification, one change date. And so that's just an update. We are waiting on any word, search document before we move ahead with the mid-cap decision. But that was made several weeks ago.
That was at our last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Are, are there any questions about that status update for Vincent from our team?
No.
Yeah, this is Bob Gleason. I just had a question about the fund changes. No, no questions on what you just discussed, but since we're on the topic of fund changes, I believe at the last meeting, was it also decided, I know it was talked about, but my notes aren't clear if it was decided, that you would also be adding the T-Roe Price 2065 Target Date Fund? I'm just asking because it would make sense to include it in the same notice. And I, I just don't recall if the committee voted on that and approved it, or if that's some action that can be taken now, or what the status is on that.
Yeah, Bob, this is Tammy. It was discussed, but it was not voted on to my recollection in my notes. I can review the, the, the recording to ensure that. But my recollection is that it was not because it was not on the last agenda, if my memory serves.
My, my notes confirm that.
And Jason, we can't add it because it's not on the agenda, correct?
That is correct, Tammy. And my recommendation in that regard would be understanding that, I think we discussed the fact that Mass Mutual can only do this once a year unless we want to pay extra for it, that that be something that's tabled probably until perhaps the last meeting of the year or early 2021 for reconsideration.
Okay. Because we do have a, a meeting scheduled in October, but it will be after we take this to the board.
Bob, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So, so I will be pursuing the two fund changes just discussed. And just food for thought, if at the next meeting you want, if, if you do want to consider the addition of that target date fund, you, you also may consider not even sending out an announcement. The target date series isn't changing. You're just adding another fund onto the tail end of that series for younger employees. It'll just be available to them when they decide to enroll in the plan or if they want to move into it. But it's up to you as to whether or not you'd want to put an, an actual notice together for that, given the added cost.
And Bob, since you have, probably have the longest tenure, I know we've added them in the past. I don't believe we did do a notice. Do you recall or?
I, I don't recall ever doing a special notice just to add a, a target date fund to an existing series. It would be one of those things where it would make sense to include it if you're already sending a notice out. But yeah, I, I don't, I don't think, personally, I don't think it's necessary to send out a notice just to announce that additional fund, but it, it's kind of a nice to do. But that's really up to you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number four, Tammy's going to provide us a status update from the loan discussion that we had at the last meeting.
Thank you, Brandy. So at the last meeting, we had a conversation regarding loans and the ability for our employees to access their own deferred compensation monies through a loan. And so it was actually positively received by the committee. And so we wanted to do some logistics and talk with Mass Mutual regarding the provisions of a loan and what that would look like, and then bring that back to you with our recommendation to move forward. So what I'd like to do is just go over about 10 descriptions and what we have decided would be the best selection of those 10 descriptions. And then if there's anything, you can stop me and, and we can discuss each one or whatever works for everyone. So that's how I'm going to move forward if that works. So the first thing we had to decide is the type of loan. So there's a residential loan and there's a general loan. And our recommendation is to offer both options. The second is the term. A residential loan can be up to 30 years and a general one to five years, which is what we would offer. The next item is interest rate. And we decided that prime rate plus 1% fixed for the rate for the life of the loan would be the best option. The minimum amount that can be, you can take a loan for is $1,000. The maximum amount is 50% of the balance up to a maximum of $50,000. For the purpose, we have no restrictions. We didn't want to be put in a position to look at people's requests for why they were wanting a loan. So there will be no restrictions on the purpose. The number of loans you can have at one time, we thought we would start off with only one and see how that works. And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, the most, the most you can have is two. Is that correct?
You, you can have more. I, I haven't really seen anyone with more than two. When you get to two, it can get a little hairy. So I, I would take that, I would take it slow in that regard if I were you.
Okay. So yes, we chose to start off with only one at a time. For funding sources, we are not limiting this. It can be all. So it can be an employee contribution, an employer contribution, or rollovers. It doesn't matter. And then as far as consent, we're not going to require a spousal consent. And then payment, it'll be done through an, a ACH directly from the member's bank account. So through the auto-clearing house, not through payroll. The loan administrator will be Mass Mutual or the Record Keeper. And there is no fee to the county. The only fees are to the employee and it's a $75 initial loan setup fee and then an annual $40 fee. The only other fee mentioned is a $75 termination fee if you want to terminate the loan. So that's what we believe would be the best to start off a loan program with. And I'm open and Bob's open to have any discussion on any of these points.
This is Fonse.
Uh huh. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Did the loan terms and, and the loan terms, did you guys copy it from somewhere else? Does it mirror some other entity? Or did you guys just come up with the, the figures or so?
This is Tammy. So Bob, Brandy and I had a discussion about what would be most, most standard to start off a new loan program. So we did what was standard in the industry. And I don't know, Bob, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that's very, very accurate. I mean, this would be what, you know, a very plain, straightforward loan program. It's very common in terms of other loan programs that we administer with other agencies.
Can I, hi, this is Chrissy. I have a question about, I wasn't clear, you said that they do not need spousal approval?
That is correct.
Did I hear that right?
You did.
If you're not going to have a purpose for it and, and that spouse is expecting some kind of retirement money later, it would seem to me that the spouse would even have a legal gripe, I guess, especially if they were, well, anyway, I just think that in the state of California, that might raise a few eyebrows.
Yeah, we had this discussion, I had this discussion with Bob today. And if you have a divorce situation where you're getting into the quadros, then it, it, you know, that's a whole different scenario. But this plan is considered the employee's.
So, so basically the divorcee could sue the husband for the difference. I think that's what you're giving that, Chrissy?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that the, the spouse is thinking that there is a retirement plan there for when this person retires. And no, this person has taken one, maybe two loans out against it and is needing to be repaid without any kind of reasoning for it. So the other spouse could have no idea what's going on. And so when they are 65 or older and there's no money, what, what kind of, I was wondering if they could sue us and say, wait a minute, how did this happen? You know, especially in California, it's 50/50, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that could be a concern for some people. I, I think in our discussion and our research, it's not much different than even, you know, like my savings account today and what I could go to the bank and do with my savings account. And my spouse would expect, and, and I'm not going to do this to him for the record, but that he would expect that those funds were there. You know, I, I think to our tax collector's point, it would end up being between the two parties. Bob, do you have anything to add?
In, in terms of the, the maximum loan amount, just, just want to remind the, the committee, you, you could not take out your entire balance as a loan. There is a limitation of 50% of the balance or $50,000, whichever is less. So in order to take out a $50,000 loan, you'd have to have at least $100,000 in your account. And if you had more than $100,000, if you had $500,000 in your account, you're still limited to $50,000. So that, that's the maximum you could take out. If you only had $20,000 in your account, you could borrow up to $10,000.
Thank you. That's a good clarification.
You're muted, you're muted there, Chrissy. Did you have something to add? Okay, just checking.
No, I was just complaining to myself.
Yeah. And Chrissy, just, you know, I, I have not reviewed this myself. I know that Tammy spoke with Bob about it. I, I think it is akin to a savings account or even a credit card type situation. I haven't discussed the pros or the cons of including any sort of spousal consent aspect. Tammy mentioned just now that it, you know, we consider it to be the employee's account. Tammy, can I ask a question? I, I should know the answer, but I don't off the top of my head. Do we require any form of spousal consent when the account is established?
We do not, no.
Okay. So Chrissy, basically what it becomes, just in practical terms, it's kind of what you think. Yes, it's a community property interest, but it essentially, it essentially becomes a race between when the plan is served with a joiner or any sort of a notification under the family code that says, hey, I have a community property interest. Once we have that, we're obligated to freeze the account. So no loans, no anything. Now, that does not preclude the terrible scenario that Tammy is planning for her spouse of taking all that money out first and then the joiner hasn't been received or notice hasn't been received. But again, Bob's point is also a valid one. There is a cap. I, I don't think, I haven't looked at it, but I, I know that Mass Mutual has. I don't think there's a legal requirement. And that being the case, it, it, you know, it's an acceptable route to, to take.
Okay. And so the spouse would not have to repay it if the member did not pay back the loan?
Well, that would depend ultimately upon any sort of marital settlement agreement and/or other resolutions between the parties. I know that if I was Tammy's spouse, I would be angry about that $50,000 and I would want to get it back someplace else. But that would be a matter for the jurisdiction of the family law court. Thank you for that hypothetical, Tammy. I'm enjoying it.
And in, in the event of non-payment, if, if the loan is defaulted, then it becomes taxable income to that participant. So they would have to pay, it would be considered a distribution. They'd have to pay the tax on it.
And that would be to the employee only, correct, Bob?
That's correct.
I would say it's an employee and to the wife if they're filing a joint return.
Were there any other questions or comments about the recommendations that Tammy shared? This is Brandy.
That sounds good. Again, I appreciate you guys, not trying to invent the wheel and actually going out there and looking and see, and see what's kind of common out there. So again, it makes me feel, it gives me the warm fuzzies. I know that the, the issue regarding the spousal portion of it does sound kind of concerning. But again, I think if I'm the one who's putting the money aside, yes, it is community property. Yes, everything will get hashed out in the divorce when she wants half of my, my pension also.
Yep. Any of our other committee members have any questions or comments? We did, as Tammy and Bob mentioned, this is Brandy again, we tried to make sure that we were doing the industry standard and somewhat to the conservative side of that industry standard for our recommendations, since this is San Joaquin County's first time out, it appears, of potentially offering loans to employees. Jason, do we need to take a vote on the ability to offer the loans?
I believe a vote would be appropriate. A motion made along the lines of accepting the recommendation of, of staff on those items that you just listed and advising HR the plan to move forward with processing it and making that option available.
Is the committee agreeable to taking this to a vote? Is there a motion or a second?
This is Fonse. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
This is Nancy Calkins. I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. I'll have Donna take the roll call vote.
Okay. Brandy Hopkins?
Approved.
Christine Bab?
Approved. Properly.
Jay Wilverding?
Oppose.
Catherine Miller?
Yes.
Nancy Calkins?
Yes.
Nancy, okay. And Fonse?
Yes.
Five, it's five to one.
Thank you, everybody.
Two, right? Two. The two. There were two nays.
Besides Jay.
No, there's, I, I did not count a second.
Chrissy said nay. Oh.
No, I said yes, but probably.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate it.
Clarification.
Yes, Ms. Strange, note the crabby no for the record. Yes, Ms. Strange, note the crabby no for the record. And Donna, one other thing, which is something I only learned fairly recently. When you call the roll on these, you do not need to recall the movement or the second, because they've already voted into the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's.
We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. It's another status update that Tammy's going to provide related to the Secure Act changes that are scheduled for October 1st of 2020.
This is just an update to let you know that we are moving forward with the Secure Act changes of allowing for withdrawals starting at 59 and a half, and then to also allow for a penalty-free withdrawal if you have a birth or an adoption, up to $5,000. And I did have a conversation with Bob. This does not require a current plan amendment change, because not all the documents have been received regarding all the plan specifications for these changes. Bob, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, the legislation allows for a plan to make operational decisions on how to proceed, which is the online survey Tammy, that Tammy completed, to indicate that you want to operate the plan to allow the voluntary and service withdrawals at 59 and a half, and to allow the penalty-free withdrawals up to $5,000 for birth or adoption of a child. The actual plan amendment doesn't have to be made until 2024 for governmental agencies. Our compliance folks are just waiting for, I guess, final regulations to be issued relative to that legislation before we draft any formal plan amendment. So we are not, we're definitely not going to be making any plan amendments in 2020, and we have until 2024 to formally amend the plan. But you're documenting what you're doing right now through that online election for the Secure Act.
Right. Does anyone have any questions for me? This is Tammy on Number Five.
And Tammy, this is a status update. We talked about this at the last meeting, correct? So we don't have any action item for this particular?
That is correct.
Okay. Jason, do you concur?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is just wrapping up the anticipated plan document changes that are scheduled for our October 20th, 2020, board meeting, with the effective date of November 1st, 2020. So based upon the item that was approved for Item Number Four, the Status Update Loans, we do plan to go to the Board of Supervisors to finalize those inclusion of optional participant changes on October 20th, with that effective date of November 1st, as I said. And then we have one other item that we'd like to discuss with the committee today. Our current plan designate the Assistant County Administrator as our committee member. And as we know, we, many of you may know, we currently do not have an Assistant County Administrator. So we are proposing to broaden that language, to give some flexibility to our County Administrator. And what we are looking at changing it to read is to say, the County Administrator, or designee from the County Administrator's office. And that way, whomever our CIO is, may choose the appropriate person from the CIO's office to sit on this committee. The other request that we have to the committee is, and I believe this came up with the previous Deferred Compensation Committee Chair, when Mr. Swett was our chair, is that we don't currently designate anybody as a vice chair. And so we would like to propose that the County Administrator or the County Administrator's designee serves as the vice chair in case there is a time where the chair cannot make it to the meeting after the meeting notice has been posted. So we'd like to get your feedback on those items. Are there any questions or concerns?
I don't want to put Jason on the spot, but why couldn't he be the vice chair? Or county council? Or is that not allowed? He's not really a member, right?
That is the answer. I've had to clarify that a few times over the past 15 years. I am not a member of the committee. So as much as I'd love it, Chrissy, I appreciate that, but no, it would not be appropriate for county council to take that role. I think that's also standard language when it says County Administrator or designee. I don't know if one of, yeah, so I'll do that again if you comment.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So Jason, to make sure I get this correct, should this take a vote as well? These two items that we're going to make these recommendations to the board in our plan document?
I do not believe it's necessary as to the loan. We've already covered that. However, I do think it would be appropriate relative to the language change, both affecting the designee language and the appointment of the vice chair for that position. A motion would be appropriate.
They both going to be included in one?
Can they be included in one?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there a committee member that's willing to make a motion on that request?
This is Chrissy. I still move.
Thank you. Is there anybody willing to make a second?
This is Fonte, I'll second.
Thank you. Donna will do the vote.
Hey, Brandy Hopkins.
Approved.
Jay Wilverding.
Approve.
Catherine Miller.
Approve.
And Nancy Calkins.
Approve.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your support. We have one last agenda item for our special meeting today. It's just an informational piece. Tammy's going to let us know about National Retirement Security Campaign that starts in the month of October, so October 1st to October 31st.
Yes, this has historically been a week campaign, but I believe due to COVID and just the fact that a lot of people are trying to get quite a bit of information out in one week, they have changed this campaign to a month. So it's National Retirement Security Month 2020. And Sheena Dupay has done an incredible job of getting all our vendors to agree to do different webinars. And so we have webinars every single day. We have a calendar that's being posted. It actually is posted today, I believe, on our website. And I have hard copies that I'm posting upfront, that I, Human Resources, but I'm also going to send it out to all the committee members so that they're aware of the, all the different offerings we're going to be doing, including prizes and everything else. So it's going to be webinars by HIGEST, MassMutual, MHN, who is our EAP provider. And then this year, we're also including SJ Sarah as part of this promotion. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up prior to the actual start date, which is October 1st.
Any questions or comments for Tammy? We're very excited to have a whole month-long of activities to encourage our employees to be thinking about retirement. Okay, hearing no questions or concerns. Just a reminder, our next meeting is October 29th at 10:00 a.m. And we will announce the location as we get a little closer to that date, depending on what COVID restrictions we have at that time. So we'll go ahead and end the meeting at 4:31. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good day.
All righty, bye now.
Bye.
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 Thank you.
Anybody else still there? All right. Well, if it's recorded for the record, thank you very much, ISD. Very smooth.